Good afternoon. This is the November 18th, 2025 City of Hutchinson City Council Meeting. Mary, please call.
Richardson.
Here.
Garza.
Here.
Bass.
Here.
Magers.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item.
Prayer.
We have Judy Miller from Journey Mennonite Church. We do not... Mr. Brown, would you like to lead us in prayer?
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings we have received from you. Lord, we seek your guidance. We seek wisdom for the council. We thank you for our employees and the hard work that they put in each and every day. Lord, protect them and guide them. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Next item.
Item number four, Proclamations, Community Foundation Week.
This is a long one. Whereas Hutchinson, Kansas recognizes the importance of our community's philanthropic sector and the critical importance of charitable giving from residents, businesses, and organizations, and whereas more than 790 community foundations across the U.S... Can I turn that down? Okay. It's fine. It's echoing. Sorry, I lost my place. And more than 100 in Kansas catalyze and promote the values and benefits of local philanthropy. And whereas for 36 years, the Hutchinson Community Foundation has made more than $115 million in grants to the community, established 386 funds, and provided tools for Hutchinson residents, businesses, and organizations to create permanent philanthropic resources for the current and future needs of our communities, allowing individuals from all walks of life to exercise generosity and be philanthropists in small, medium, and large ways. And whereas through the power of philanthropy, the Community Foundation also convenes residents around critical community issues and efforts, strengthens the nonprofits in our region, and works with partners to root and accelerate community wealth through local investments and businesses and projects that align with its mission and long-term community outcomes. And whereas together, we can build a stronger Hutchinson, Reno County, and Kansas, and improve the future by creating community legacies to benefit all residents. And whereas it is appropriate to set aside a time to recognize the value and impact of philanthropy and community foundations on a local, regional, and state level for the investment, partnership, and leadership they create across Kansas communities. Now, therefore, I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 12 through 18, 2025, as Community Foundation Week. Would you like to say a few words? Do you want to take a picture before or after? There were a lot of "whereas's" in that one, but you covered a lot of ground. Thank you. So I'm Carrie Mayer. I'm Director of Strategy for Hutchinson Community Foundation. Thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation. It's exciting to have, you know, a week for community foundations. I also want to acknowledge John Richardson as a board member for the Community Foundation and incoming board chair, taking his seat in January. So thank you for your leadership and your service to the Community Foundation and the community at large. The proclamation covered a lot of ground, but I just want to say I'm thankful for our partnership with the city in many, many ways over the years, in particular currently on housing, economic development, and community engagement with the Love Where You Live Community Empowerment Initiative. We couldn't do what we do without you all as great partners, and we hope you feel the same way about us. We helped donors with their philanthropic goals through a variety of giving strategies while supporting roughly 75 nonprofits that serve Reno County through grant-making, strategic initiatives, capacity building, and leadership development. In short, we use our social, moral, intellectual, reputational, and financial capital to identify gaps, connect donors, and create solutions to adaptive challenges facing our communities. This is the time of year when we ask for contributions to the Fund for Reno County, which was established in 1990 as a permanent resource to meet our ever-changing needs of Reno County. Since 1990, we have awarded $6.3 million in grants to Reno County projects and organizations from that fund. And just over in 2025, we have granted 56 grants totaling more than $510,000 to 48 organizations serving Reno County. All of that is captured in a new grant-making newsletter featuring the Hutchinson Municipal Band on the cover that should be landing in mailboxes soon. We have a goal of growing the Fund for Reno County to $20 million by 2030, which would allow us to make $1 million annually in grants. We want to remind everyone that Giving Tuesday is coming up on December 2nd. That's a great opportunity to remember the organizations that you care about in Reno County or beyond, and consider a gift on Giving Tuesday, including our own Fund for Reno County if you're inclined. And soon, we look forward to coming back to sharing the second year of data from the Love Where You Live Resident Perception Survey and all of our grant opportunities for 2026. So again, thank you for your partnership and the proclamation. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number five, petitions, remarks, prances, and oral communications from the audience.
Is there anyone here in the audience to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item.
Item number six, consent agenda.
Any remarks or questions from council?
No.
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 Looking for a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item number seven, ordinances and resolutions. A, consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance and delivery of $1,820,000 principal amount of general obligation improvement bond, Series 2025-C, of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds as they become due.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. We had a bond sale and a temporary note sale this morning, so to start, we'll go over the bond sale. You have a handout in front of you that shows that we have three bids on the general obligation bonds ranging from 3.85% to 3.95%. With all those three bids being so close, it was a very competitive bid, which is good. The 3.85% one offered us a premium, and with that premium, we're able to reduce the actual bond size. So that is why the bond amount went down to $1,820,000. As a reminder, this is to fund the Woody C. Avenue C. Bridge repairs and traffic signal improvements. Legal counsel and bond counsel has reviewed the ordinance and the bids, and we recommend approving, awarding the bid to the brownstone investments and authorizing the ordinance.
I have a question on... Is it $1,820,000 or $1,920,000?
$1,820,000. Yes. So because they offer us a premium upfront, we're able to reduce that bond size. And I believe Emma Kate from Kutec Rock is on the line with us, too, if you have any questions.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a typo on what we were provided.
It's not. That's why the original amount is in brackets, because we knew there'd probably be a premium, and the amount would change.
Okay, thank you.
It's very typical.
Any additional remarks from council? Give me a second. I have the wrong agenda pulled up. I have the two-page instead of the full. Like I thought.
Page 206.
Yeah, no, I don't have it at all, so here it is. Okay, you can move on while I find it. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion from council.
I'll move to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance and delivery of $1,820,000 principal amount of general obligation improvement bond, Series 2025-C, of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds as they become due.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. We had a bond sale and a temporary note sale this morning, so to start, we'll go over the bond sale. You have a handout in front of you that shows that we have three bids on the general obligation bonds ranging from 3.85% to 3.95%. With all those three bids being so close, it was a very competitive bid, which is good. The 3.85% one offered us a premium, and with that premium, we're able to reduce the actual bond size. So that is why the bond amount went down to $1,820,000. As a reminder, this is to fund the Woody C. Avenue C. Bridge repairs and traffic signal improvements. Legal counsel and bond counsel has reviewed the ordinance and the bids, and we recommend approving, awarding the bid to the brownstone investments and authorizing the ordinance.
I have a question on... Is it $1,820,000 or $1,920,000?
$1,820,000. Yes. So because they offer us a premium upfront, we're able to reduce that bond size. And I believe Emma Kate from Kutec Rock is on the line with us, too, if you have any questions.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a typo on what we were provided.
It's not. That's why the original amount is in brackets, because we knew there'd probably be a premium, and the amount would change.
Okay, thank you.
It's very typical.
Give me a second. I have the wrong agenda pulled up. I have the two-page instead of the full. Like I thought.
Page 206.
Yeah, no, I don't have it at all, so here it is. Okay, you can move on while I find it. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion from council.
I'll move to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance and delivery of $1,820,000 principal amount of general obligation improvement bond, Series 2025-C, of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds as they become due, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item B, consider a resolution prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of $1,820,000 principal amount of general obligation bond, Series 2025-C, of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, previously authorized by an ordinance of the city.
So this is the section... Second action required to accept the bids for the general obligation bonds and issue them. This resolution prescribes the form and details, the details of how they're going to be issued and everything. So this will... This is recommended to be approved by council. Again, this has been reviewed by legal and bond counsel as well.
Any questions or remarks from council?
No.
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 Looking for a motion?
I move to approve a resolution prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of $1,820,000 principal amount of general obligation bond, Series 2025-C, of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, previously authorized by an ordinance of the city, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss. Yes.
Item C, consider a resolution authorizing the issuance and delivery of $10,960,000 principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, Series 2025-D, of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, for the purpose of temporarily financing the cost of certain internal improvements of the city and amending resolution number 2025-R31. No.
No. We're not amending that. We took that part off. Okay. So we also had a sale for temporary notes. This is for the water rights that we intend to purchase. So this amount originally was $11,435,000. You'll see in front of you the bids for this. Again, we had three bids ranging from 3.37% to 3.49%. Again, very competitive, very good rates, so we are happy with those rates. Robert W. Baird &amp; Co. will be awarded that. And because that rate is lower than we expected, we're able to lower the amount that we are issuing, so it will be the $10,960,000 instead of the $11,435. So again, legal and bond counsel has reviewed the documents, they have reviewed the bids, and they are recommending approval.
And the language in the action item is correct.
If it says an amending resolution, we don't have to do that. They decided we don't have to.
Okay. Any remarks or questions from council?
No.
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 Is there anybody in the audience here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve, consider a resolution authorizing the issuance and delivery of $10,960,000 principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, Series 2025-D, of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, for the purpose of temporarily financing the cost of certain internal improvements of the city, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, new business. A, consider bid results for 24-10 Spyglass Hills Water Main Project.
Good evening, council. Justin Karam, Construction Manager, Engineering Division. Purpose of this project is to install eight-inch water main, valves, and fire hydrants on Cherry Hills Drive from Spyglass Drive to Jupiter Hills Drive, Fox Fire Street from Spyglass Drive to Cherry Hills Drive. So, and then this line would connect to the existing eight-inch water main on Spyglass that also goes south on Jupiter Hills. Anticipated project start date would be in early 2026, potentially February if what the contractors tell me stays true, and substantial completion on it is set for May 1st. So JU designed this project and sealed the project. This project got to us because on August 6th, the resolution was approved for the Spyglass Hills Benefit District, and we had two bids that were open November 4th. The low bid was submitted by AIPAC Kansas in the amount of $330,503.50. The bid is below engineer's estimate, which is $348,250. After reviewing the bids, everything looked to be in line with market prices, no surprises. We believe it's very competitive. We had only about three contractors interested, and we only had two that ended up bidding. AIPAC has done several projects for us recently, and some of those have been full waterline projects, so pretty happy with their work over the years. Our recommendation is that council approve the low bid and award the project to AIPAC Kansas incorporated in the amount of $330,503.50. I stand for any questions you have.
Was the estimate done in-house, or was that estimate done by JU?
It was done by JU. And so it was actually updated a couple weeks before we let the bid, so it did increase a little bit from when the Benefits District was drafted. But I think in the Benefits District, we set the total price to be $480,000, and so we're actually sitting with these numbers about $45,000 under. So that was some good contingency and some buffer in case things come up, so.
Okay. And this project originated from a resident petition, is that right?
That's correct.
This is the one that started last... Was it last summer?
Yes.
Okay. I have two questions about the properties, and if you can answer them, that's fine. Maybe Mr. Vigas could chime in. Are there any empty lots in this area that are potential sites to build on, or are these all?
It's my understanding that if they're already... I don't believe there's any vacant lots, but the Benefits District as a whole had 100% agreeance, and they actually brought to the table how they wanted to split it. So I don't believe there's any conflict or any issues with how it's being deviated between the properties, is my understanding.
There is one lot out there for sale.
Okay. And it's not owned by, like, a neighboring?
Yeah, it's owned by a neighboring, but I think they got that all figured out, too, so.
Okay. And are all of the lots that will be new connections within the city limits?
I believe that whole neighborhood is city limits, and this project is only putting in main and is not doing actual surface connections that would go through the typical process, so this is just main, so.
Okay. Or can you answer that? Are all of these properties that would be on the new line within the city limits?
I can certainly say that if they intend to connect to or already connected to the line but are in the city limits but have not been annexed, that it would be the intention of the city to annex said properties.
Okay.
So while not related to this, the policy, the special assessment policy staff is working on that, and we are adding language that, just to make it clear, that if you want city water, that you have to be annexed into the city. And then in working with you, Mayor, on some language that, say essentially if someone were to owe back taxes to the city, hypothetically, say $100,000 is owed to the city in property taxes. Under the current policy, they could still take advantage of the special assessment policy. With the new policy, the language would be that you have to pay up if you want to take advantage of the special assessment policy. So it's to make the city whole if you want further breaks, so.
Thank you. That answers my questions. Any questions or remarks from council?
No.
No.
Is there anybody in the audience here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move to accept the low bid of AIPAC Kansas for the 2010 Spyglass Hills Water Main Project in the amount of $330,503.50, and authorize staff to issue the notice of award and begin work on drafting the project contracts and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item 8B, annexation of land adjoining the city Prairieland Partners property.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. A petition and consent for annexation has been submitted to the city by AVE-PLP Properties, LLC. Mr. McKeon is present in the audience. This is the Prairieland Partners facility at K-61 and US Highway 50. They are seeking to expand their facility, and they need to include some additional acreage within their project. And it didn't make it into the agenda packet, but it did provide you a copy of the survey so you could have an idea of what's being included. It's just a little less than seven acres, and it would allow them to complete their project, and I think they have maybe a desire to issue bonds in the future for the project. So that's the purpose of this. It's not a burden to the city in any way. The... And I'll tell you also by looking at the tract, we looked at it originally, said, "Why don't you just put the whole tract in there?" Well, if you look at the map, Cow Creek waves back and forth on the eastern side of that property, and so it can't really be developed unless you want a canoe. So this will help them out a great deal, and we are certainly positive about the expansion of this facility. Prairieland Partners has been a business in Hutchinson for a long, long time, and we would ask the council to approve the annexation ordinance.
Is this the same company that was at the Chamber breakfast last week?
It's a partnership with, I believe, the college and the dealership there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really exciting.
Do we know if they're pursuing IRBs or the NRP for those improvements?
Randy McFadden, I'll answer a couple questions.
Yeah.
Going to put a little over 60,000 square foot addition onto the east side, believe it or not. Anything that we wanted to add on to was in the country. So the property line was right up next to us, so we needed to get that inside the city limits. Like I said, 60,000 square feet shop, going to have about 20 service bays in conjunction with the HCC. They're going to have two classrooms, two offices, and four dedicated bays that they use whenever they're in session. It'd be in the south, excuse me, the northwest corner of the addition. They'll have their own interest in everything there. There'll be a sign on the... It says, "Community College," so anxious to expand in town.
Yeah, that was exciting news for us the other morning at the farm breakfast that the chamber put on, and again, partnership is good with the college.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, it's completely separate from the dealership. Although it's connected, it's separate. Isn't that what you got from that?
It is inside the footprint of the building.
Yeah.
But it is divided... There is a wall that separates it. Yeah, there's their own entrance, restrooms, break room, offices, and there is a wall separating their shop from the rest of the shop, yeah, so.
And so you're... Did you say you're adding 20 bays?
Yes.
Wow, okay. And then two of those are for the college?
Four.
Four are for the college, thank you. Okay. Awesome. I didn't realize it was that much. Yeah, that's really exciting. I think the thing that I really enjoyed at the Chamber breakfast was when Deborah Tupul stated that Reno County has like a $1.4 billion ag industry. I didn't realize that, and that's absolutely amazing, and you guys will be primed to graduate John Deere-certified folks right out of... Technicians right out of here, so.
There's two ways to get technicians. You either grow them or steal them, and we found that it's easier to grow them.
Yeah, that's awesome. I love that you guys are helping to invest in the ag world and in the future of our students here, so.
Thank you, council.
Any additional remarks or questions from council?
No.
Thank you, sir. I move to approve an ordinance annexing certain land within the limits and boundaries of the City of Hutchinson, a tract generally east and north of the intersection of US Highway 61 and US Highway 50, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss. Yes.
Item number nine, report to city officials.
Craig, do you want to go first?
I went first last time.
Scott, do you want to go first?
No, Garza can go first.
Okay.
I've been going first for a long...
We've got time. You're trying to get out of here before 5:00.
Man, I thought I was going to be... Anyway, yes, you can tell, the City of Hutch is working really, really hard. We're doing a lot of things that's going on like this, so I just want to tell the audience and people listening or on TV that we're doing a great job. I think we're doing a great job. And just keep us in mind and back us. We have to have your backing if we're going to get Hutch to go. So remember to help us out and back us and listen. That's all I got. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I would like to...
I would like to discuss compensation for Hutchinson City Council for future councils, not for the current council.
Wait a minute.
For people that run for city council in the future, to try to get people that can, to run and take time off of work, because people don't run, a lot of people don't run because they can't afford to take time off work. I would like to consider that and discuss it at the next, at the second city council meeting in December.
December 16th?
Mm-hmm.
Let's say you, Paul. Is this binding action for future council? Can we have that discussion? I mean, how does?
You can have the discussion at the second meeting in December. The thing that you're probably going to run into is that you've already done the budget for next year.
Right.
I'm talking for future elected officials.
Understood.
Yeah.
So you may want to consider that for future budgets.
Right.
Okay.
So if you
And you could have proven it as, as a part of the overall budget.
Right.
I feel like the only way we can legitimately, legitimately have this discussion if it's not, if it's not for any of us on city council or anyone that's been voted in, sorry, but for possible, to, to try to encourage people to run for city council in the future. And if, if not, I think we need to work with other small towns and communities in rural areas to try to petition our state senators and US senators to try to find some type of IRS tax deduction, something to try to help encourage to run for boards and committees in rural America, because you look at the last election, a lot of them were left empty.
You're going to give away your whole argument and not have anything to say on December 16th?
Vet it, discuss it.
And, and just, just to give you kudos, you had that idea three years ago, three or four years ago when you and I were seated, and, you know, I took that idea to Senator Moran, and he kind of went, hmm. So I don't know what the next step is. I mean, we, I've planted the seed, and I think it's, it's an interesting idea that maybe we just get a tax deduction at the very least, but great thinking outside the box.
But at very minimum, we can at least talk about it.
Yeah.
We will on December 16th.
Sounds good, I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Anything else you want to talk about at a future meeting?
Yeah, anything I have to talk about will be at meetings after January, where I come up and tell you all what you're doing wrong.
Great. I can't wait.
That'll be awesome. I'll be limited to five minutes, I'll be quick.
You will, yes. Unlike now, when you still have
I'm good.
Okay. Greg?
Thanks to city staff as usual for, for listening to me and helping me with a couple of issues that citizens have brought to my attention. Thank you always for your hard work, and it is appreciated by myself. We'll continue to keep moving forward. Thank you.
So I want to, I want to comment on, I feel like a, as a community council, city staff, everybody that I think is involved with everything in Hutchinson, we are all trying to move this in a positive direction. I get disheartened sometimes when I read things online that we're up here just not trying, thinking about the community and not trying to take Hutchinson in a positive direction, and I appreciate Mr. Richardson's comment the other night on a new business venture that's coming to town, and sometimes we don't always get what we want, but it's always moving Hutchinson in a positive direction. And so I just want to make everyone aware that we are up here trying to do the best for Hutchinson as we can, and it's not an easy job. We're not going to make everybody happy, but we're up here in the best interest of our community, so if you have any questions, you can always feel free to contact us, so that's all I have.
Awesome. I do want to say congratulations to Mr. Truyn on winning his election. It's exciting to have you up here in January. We will miss you so much, John. Come back and visit anytime. Mr. Vegas, I was under the impression that we had a housing, something from Ms. Paxton.
It was on the consent agenda.
It was at the consent agenda, okay. Thank you. I thought she had had a presentation and a special item that got moved. Okay. Yeah, a couple of things that I want to bring up about the special assessment like we talked about, and if you could, Ms. Vegas, add that to wherever it makes sense here in the next couple of meetings. The goal of that, so council knows, like he said, is so that when we're awarding any type of contract to, whether it's a nuisance abatement company or an IRB or anything like that, that we've done our due diligence as a city to understand, do they have current code violations? Do they have current taxes that are due? Are they, are they, you know, good partners, not only in that did they like win the, being the lowest bid, but are they also good in the community? So I think that's important to, we're expected, at least socially, to always be up on our taxes, and I think we should carry that through with everybody that we contract with. I did have a request that I sent off to Streets Department about adding a stop sign at Waldron, where it, where Waldron jogs north, and then the hospital has that southernmost driveway that comes out that does not, traffic coming out of the hospital does not stop, but every other driveway coming out of the clinic or coming out of the hospital does stop. And so as we drive more traffic to that corner, whether through the YMCA or the hotel, the convention center, the restaurant, all of the above, I don't think it's very clearly marked that traffic doesn't stop, and it is a state law that you stop when coming out of a driveway. But yeah, I just want to make that more visible for our, especially for our visitors. It doesn't seem like stopping traffic coming out of, coming out of the hospital would be a big deal, so Cecil is looking at that, as well as an additional crosswalk signal at HMS 7. Still waiting on an answer about that, but there is a place where as you cross Maple, you cannot see the pedestrian traffic signal for the crosswalk, which is a safety concern that does not match up with MUTCD guidelines.
Engineering did review that in the past. I did ask what the findings were. They have to dig through their files.
Yeah.
So as soon as they find that, I'll pass it forward.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. And I think there was something else either about a stop sign or something, but I'd have to dig through emails.
Mayor, do we have any stop signs left for Waldron?
Yeah, I think you just plant little seeds.
I've used them all up.
I thought we'd used all the stop signs we could possibly use on Waldron.
They still have all the flags on those too, and they've been up there for a while, I feel like. I don't know if they should take the flags down, but we could put roundabouts instead.
We have enough
We do have, we do have people with the press here that can put that in the paper that you said.
Yes. We have plenty of time, we're done early, so this is what you get, folks.
Yep. I think that is all that I have. I do look forward to the inoperable vehicle discussion, that will be after January, so that John can't get his opinion.
Better make sure my truck starts up and runs.
Mr. Vegas, any remarks?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 10, future agenda items and operable vehicle discussion. Item number 11, executive session.
Are we having a session?
Yes, 20 minutes.
I move to, move to go into recess into executive session pursuant to confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships, exception KSA 754319B4, in order to discuss financial affairs of a private sector entity. The open meeting to resume in city council chambers at 4:55 PM.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
I was waiting for someone to say no, because I said a motion passed unanimously. I was waiting for someone to say no because it says a motion to adjourn.
So where do your tax dollars really go? Let's break it down with a single dollar. First, here's the truth. The city of Hutchinson only gets about 25 cents of every property tax dollar you pay. Sales tax? We get just 1.4% of purchases made in the city. So no, we're not swimming in cash. But here's how we stretch every dollar we do get. 44 cents goes to public safety, police, fire and emergency services. That's nearly half of your dollar keeping Hutch safe. 15 cents for parks and facilities. Mowed grass, sports facilities, pools and splash pads, walking trails and clean public restrooms. 15 cents covers capital improvements and bond payments. Roads, major repairs and the debt we've taken on to build what matters. 10 cents goes to public works and engineering. Water, sewer, storm drains and street maintenance. 9 cents runs the core admin team, IT, finance, HR, the city attorney, keeping everything moving behind the scenes. 5 cents for economic development, bringing new jobs and opportunities. 1 and 1/2 cents for code enforcement, making sure buildings are safe. 1 cent for planning and development, guiding future growth. And just 1/10th of a cent for arts and culture. Yep, 1/10. We listen to residents, we crunch the numbers and we focus on real needs, not fluff. We treat every cent like it counts because it does. That's the City of Hutch budget in action. Smart, transparent, focused on what matters.